Good morning, and welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting of October 25th, 2022. If we all rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the agenda review?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
What's the agenda?
It's been moved.
Second. Second by hand. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose curious. Okay. The first thing we have on our agenda is drainage, and we have the final hearing for County Ditch 86. Meeting consists of three public hearings, redetermination hearing, improvement hearing, and a lateral hearing. We'll start with the redetermination of benefits hearing. And Mr. Austinson, would you read the jurisdictional documents?
Okay. Purpose of the meeting. County Ditch 86 was first established in 1956 and is located in Decoria and Beaufort Townships. Today's hearing involves two petition projects before the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, the improvements of branches two and three, and the establishment of a new lateral. As part of the petition, a redetermination of benefits was also ordered by the drainage authority. Requested action, there will be action, five separate actions before the board. Approval of redetermination of benefits, approval, establishment of the improvement petition. If the improvement is established, approval of financing resolution for the approval or establishment of the petition for lateral X. And if that is approved, if the lateral is established, approval of the financing resolution. Landowner information meeting, we had one on October 17th, 2022. The hearing notices were mailed on September 14th, 2022. Notice was posted at the hearing outside the Blue Earth County Courthouse. It's located at 204 South 5th, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of public hearing is also published in the Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks. But again, the basis of resolution financing. And we'll be having the DNR Commissioners' Advisory Report. We'll read those when we get to those in the improvement.
Thank you, Craig. Can I get a motion to accept affidavits into the legal record? I have a motion, second?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose curious. Okay, then at this time, I'll ask Mr. Dan Ruby to go over the viewers' report. Good morning.
Good morning, Dan. On October 17th, we did have an informational. Today's, October 25th, we're having the final hearing. The appointed viewers, I'm Dan Ruby. Bill Anderson is here to my right, Lance Roberts, and Ron Rehnquist. Ron Rehnquist is a certified appraiser, has 35-plus years of experience in drainage and end engineering, and he helps us be consistent. The reasons for the informational that was held, to explain the viewing process, to ease reading of the report, sharing of questions and concerns, making changes at that time, and to prepare the reports for this final hearing. This report covers the redetermination and improvement for a previously constructed drainage system. It is a comparison of conditions prior to artificial drainage with those that should exist with the drainage system in a reasonable state of repair. The viewing process is a mass appraisal process that values a universe of properties as of a given date using a standard methodology, employing common data, and allowing for statistical testing. Here are some of the aids we use in viewing: USDA Soil Survey, GIS photos and data, Minnesota LiDAR, the DEM, or the digital elevation model, yield averages from the university systems, and production costs, the sales data from Blue Earth County Assessor's Office, and we visually inspect each 40-acre tract. Here's a summary. CD 86 was established in 1958. There have been two improvements. The first improvement was established July 8th of 97. The second improvement was first established in 97. The establishment was appealed by Blaine Phillips and Wayne Pestka. After much litigation, the improvement was established for the second time on January 23rd of 2001. The second establishment was appealed all the way to the Minnesota Supreme Court. The Supreme Court ruling affirmed the establishment of the improvement. Portions of the system have been put into a permanent rim easement at several locations within the watershed. Blakesley and Menkell in Section 3, Preston in Section 2, and Phillips in Section 35. The system provides an outlet for lands in Sections 1, 2, 3, 10, 11, and 12 in Beaufort Township, Sections 25, 26, 34, 35, and 36 in Decorah Township in Blue Earth County. Here's an image of the watershed. I did trim out a lot of the pictures that I had, but I was, we were down in Ames at Iowa State this last weekend, and one of the slides I like to show is the Swamp Angel, how they dug the original ditches. Up on the wall in Iowa State Library, there was a Grant Wood mural of a bull ditch. So I thought that was kind of, I've never actually seen one upright in place, and you know, one man has to handle that big chunk of wood and iron. It's, I thought it was pretty novel. Okay, benefits and damages. If a landowner benefits, he shares in that cost. If a landowner is damaged, he receives compensation. Benefits classifications based on conditions before drainage. The A is open water and cattail. B is for seasonally flooded hay and pasture. The C needs drainage. D typically does not need drainage. And the NB is for trees, conservation, wetland areas, native, non-converted. The other column is for roads. Values prior to drainage. The As, standing water and cattails, had zero market value and zero economic productivity. The Bs, seasonally flooded pasture ground, market value of 1,000 to 2,000 with economic productivity of $125. The C, wet subsoil marginal cropland is market value of 6,000 to 7,000 and economic productivity of $777.75. The D, the uplands, the market value is between 6,000 and 8,000 with economic productivity of 869 and a quarter. Here's the potential value with NRCS guideline drainage. The A, drained slough area, medium-class ponded agricultural ground. Just a second ago, it was worth zero, and now that it's drained, the market value, our opinion of the market value is between 7,000 and 8,000 with an economic productivity of 841.80. The Bs, well-drained ground, high class, is market value of 75,000 to 8500 with an economic productivity of 874.40. The Cs, well-drained ground, we consider to be the best class. The market value is between 85,000 and 95,000, economic productivity of 915. And the D, well-drained ground, high land class with improved farm mobility is market value between 7,000 and 9,000, economic productivity of $915. Here's a slide representing the income approach to value. We looked at a two-year rotation of corn and soybeans. For corn, we've had a 210 bushel potential average, sales value of $5. The soybeans, a potential average was 60 bushels with a sales value of $13 per bushel. For the two-year rotation, the adjusted income was $915. The direct production expense for that two-year rotation was $424.87. So when all the calculations are done, the bottom of the sheet, the benefit value kicks out at the As were $5,950 an acre. The Bs was $4,570 an acre. The Cs, $2,300. And the Ds, $710 an acre. In viewing, one of our tasks is to evaluate the system as it lays in the ground today. So to do this, we use efficiency. The net benefit is reduced when actual conditions do not meet NRCS hydrologic efficiency standards. In this case, the As we felt were at 90%, the Bs were at 95%, the Cs were 100%, the Ds were 100%. So that just means they're not quite what they should be. And this report basically covers the handout that you received in the mail, you know, a few weeks ago. Proximity is used to adjust benefits to allow owners not directly on the system a reduction for the cost of tile or connection to the system. This is done by distance and joint cost for connection. This is in the very center of your report. In this example, this is JD 15. This is an open ditch. The blue line represents an open ditch. And for this quarter-quarter, he would be at 100%. For every quarter-quarter you go away, in this case, we'll just say it's 15% subtracted for each quarter-quarter out. So if this is at 100, this is 85, 70, 55, 30. And you know, eventually, we'd get to the lowest value, which is usually about 20% is what we normally consider our lowest value for proximity. Here's a slide for roads. We measure all the roads. We consider the width because, you know, interstate is wider than a state highway. A state highway is wider than a county road. A county road is wider than a township road. And we put values per foot in our calculations. Here are the, here is the bottom line. Okay, for CD 86, the ROB, the net benefits was $7,201,037. There were 227 As, 336 Bs, 2,309 Cs, 671 Ds. There was buffer damage area of 15.85 acres. The dam, buffer damage area was $87,729. Okay. There were a few recommended changes. Okay. When we originally submitted the original report, we did not have included an outlet benefit to JD 28. JD 28 is on the west edge of CD 86. It uses 18% of the ditch and combined watershed, just using the lower reach of the ditch. For that area, there was a cut. Cut was made of 0 to 6 feet, so we figured it was an average of three-foot cut for that area. For a $100,000 project, they would have, the cost to their system would be $758 or approximately 7.75%. The net, the total outlet benefits was $55,000 is what we recommend. Here's the, an image that represents that system. Here, the 28 comes in and drops her water right here on CD 86, and they use this distance of the ditch. And we did look at the cost to cure based on how much it would cost them to do that much of the ditch by themselves if they had to. Okay, next is Blaine Phillips restoration. He has a rim wetland restoration in Section 35. He's in the northwest quarter. We, when there's a restoration that is still used as a system for its drainage, we still benefit that parcel, that parcel for the A and B acres. So in this table, you'll see the benefits that we have for his A acres and his B acres. For the C and D, because they could have been enrolled anyway, I guess I should go back. Without a crop history, you cannot enroll something in rim. So if the ditch wasn't there, he would not have, it would have been a wetland to start with. He would not have been able to enroll it. But because the ditch system occurred and happened, he was able to enroll it and have a financial gain. That's where we're at. His original benefits was 6.27%. We looked at the last redetermination, and his new benefits is 2.92%. I discussed this with Blaine on the phone. And this, by the keeping of the values for the As and Bs, is we consider, we're consistent with Blue Earth County and all the counties that we deal with on creptorim or rim projects. Here's an image of the Blaine Phillips property. On the phone, he stated that there was no intake to take overflow, but talking to the engineer and Craig Austinson, the water, if there's a flood, the water, some water goes into a managed level or an overflow to get back into the ditch system. Okay, Veronica Brickhoff spoke at the informational. Here's a map of her property. She's sent it. She said that her husband's been busy installing upwards of 150 trees in their project. She put little black dots all over showing these, an estimate of where the trees were. We admire the conservation effort. Originally, it was, we had zero As, one B, zero Cs, and three Ds, and two non-benefiteds. Because of their efforts and providing a map, we now, we have it at zero As, one B, four, one D for the buildings, and four non-benefiteds. The reason we kept the B is because this low area, without the drainage system, this, the trees that you'd plant in here would struggle because they would flood. Okay, Jeremy Naes called us. We looked at his property, which is here. He had an acre here. We had called, I believe we had it as a C. He helped us understand that there's no culvert. In the field approach, there's no culvert to the north. It, if anything, it's a little pocket. We, he has it drained out to the south, so we drew that one out. We just went in ArcGIS and we drew the line and took this little one acre out. Here's the 2022 ROB corrected version. Now we have 7 million, in net benefits, we have $7,255,036. Very similar to what I said. So we, now we have 227 As, 336 Bs, 2308 Cs, 669 Ds, and the tile footage is 51,630. And a damage area for buffers, 15.85 acres with a cost to have, to establish the buffer of $87,729. And there's 457.39 acres of non-benefited. Okay, I think that's the end of my presentation for the ROB.
Well, thank you, Dan, for that report. And at this time, we'll open up the hearing for public comment. Those individuals wishing to comment on the redetermination benefits may do so at this time. And please come forward and state your name and address for the record. We ask that you limit your time to no more than three minutes. Again, come forward, Dan.
I'm Blaine Phillips.
Morning, Blaine.
And I have nothing against drainage. Heaven knows I pay enough $177, but I get benefit. Here, I receive no benefit. He says that, Craig Austin says I got this outlet into the ditch. The records show that it's almost a 10-foot elevation from the bottom of that tile to where it can get out. I don't live next to an ocean. I don't expect any hurricanes. You'd have to have 10-foot of water on top of the ground to push it down to the tile to get it back out again. I don't see that ever happening. My farm has never been in a wetland and never had a wetland as of 2000. I got pictures of crop being all the way across. And I was getting a benefit at that time, though. I'm not arguing that. But if you had a car, and you're paying license on it to drive on roads, and it got crushed at a, you had the car crushed because you had no longer used it, you would not be paying any payment for road tax anymore. You don't pay it anymore. Car's gone. You're not using, you don't have to pay it. So I don't know what I'm paying for here. I've always been the highest on the ditch system, which I said has been wrong all along. They got this through by underhanded paying off Treven Buck's, his assessment completely. Got the copies of the checks, copies of the contracts. It was all done illegally. And I just don't see why I pay for this ditch system. And I've been arguing this since 2000. Nobody wants to listen. Eventually, I'll find somebody that will. I hope it's you guys. Okay?
Thank you, Blaine.
Thank you, Blaine.
Thank you.
Anybody else's time wish to speak? And do we have anybody else wishing to comment on the redetermination benefits for County Ditch 86? Last time they have, wishing here to comment on the redetermination benefits of County Ditch 86, come forward. At this point, then, we'll bring it, clearly no comments regarding this. At this point, then, we'll bring it, apparently no comments regarding this on the public comment period. Bring it back to the board for a motion second to accept the findings in order.
I would move approval.
Moved by Kip for Ditch 86. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So in regards to Mr. Phillips's issue, is what I heard so far today and in the past, I've been in contact with Mr. Phillips several times, and I believe Chuck Brandl, the viewers, and the county staff all believe there's a benefit because of, one, the ditch goes around it, and so you're able to put it into a program, and two, there is an outlet, even though it is at a very high flow. Is that my understanding of our, we got three, we got three?
Do you want me to comment?
Sure.
So Ryan Henninger blew a county drainage. There's actually two outlets. There's a control structure, and there's a 24-inch ASI also located in the corner near fence line. There's two leaking private tiles also on the property. So there's multiple sources of water at this.
All right. Thank you.
There is a, yeah.
So I, I know this is a difficult situation. Blaine has done a great job with his wetland restoration. It is good to have them in the area. We sure enjoy them. But I believe that there is some, some benefit. It's at 2.38 percent, I believe, or 2.78 percent, so the benefit is relatively small. But I, I will support the viewers today with their recommendation of that. That's all ahead, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Could I make one more statement? They haven't addressed the fact that I've got three ponds dug, over 30,000 yards of dirt removed, that catches the neighbor's water, and it saves the ditch system from getting the water. I think someone should pay attention to this contract. Contract says I can't build on it, I can't crop it, so I would like somebody to show me where I get dollar advantage. There's no benefit.
Well, your, your benefit, from my understanding of what I gathered today from the reports and in the past, is your benefit comes from the fact that there is a high-flow outlet. Someone correct me if I'm not stating this properly. And I think I caught a little bit from the viewers' report that because the ditch system was there before, and you could crop it, and you was able to take it out of crop and put it into a program, that is considered a benefit, if I'm understanding that correctly.
Blaine, did you, when it was in cropland and you made the conscious decision to take it and put it into a rim project, was there any form of compensation at that time? Did they, did they pay you a lump sum or period over 15 years? You got paid over 15 years?
I got paid an outright price.
Okay.
One day, and that was it.
Well, I have no idea how much he got paid, what he got paid. I restored a wetland myself, and I benefited. I will benefit till the day I die, and my kids will benefit going forward. We reduced his benefits by more than half.
I understand.
I'm, I'm just saying that in the end, without the ditch system, Blaine would not have been able to put it in the program. It's, and it, and his water, I don't know how high the elevation of those outlets are, but at some, some point, if we get 40 days and 40 nights of rain, we're, it's gonna go over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to state that my benefit on my contract is I can pay the taxes and keep down the weeds for the rest of my life, and the rest of my kid's life, and the rest of their kid's life, and the rest of their kid's life. That is one heck of a benefit.
Well, I understand your frustrations, Blaine, but I'm gonna move with the recommendations we have with the staff today. You have other recourse that you can travel through if you would like to.
State Attorney General.
Yep.
All right. We have the motion, I think we're ready. We have a motion in front of us. Okay. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay, at this point, we have next item agenda in the public hearing for the improvement of County Ditch 86. Craig Austinson would, make sure it was in the right spot here. Please review the jurisdiction documents, Mr. Austin.
This is on the actual improvement. And the, let's see, again, the notices were sent out the same time as the redetermination as October 17th. Hearing notices are mailed on September 14th. Notice was posted outside of the Blue Earth County Courthouse. Notices of public hearing were published in the Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks. We will have a resolution to finance on this issue, and I'll then continue with the reading of the DNR letter. Okay. This is from the Department of Natural Resources dated August 25th, 2022, addressed to myself on the subject of the County Ditch 86 Branch 2 and 3 improvement, final engineering report for Blue Earth County, Minnesota. Dear Mr. Austinson, on behalf of the Director of the Division of Ecological Water Resources and Department of Natural Resources, I offer the following comments on the final engineer's report for the, for the project referenced above. In accordance with the Minnesota statutes 1038.255, of general concern in all proposed ditch improvement projects is the cumulative effect that the projects have upon downstream resources and property owners in terms of quantity and quality of water that is received. Even small project-specific and cumulative impacts from ditch projects can result in downstream flooding, erosion, and degrading water quality. The final engineer's report continues to use the muted changes in flow at the outlet of County Ditch 86 to support the project, but in reality, the flows will increase and contribute to unnecessary impacts downstream. Again, the cumulative effect issue is a concern and should be a priority. For those reasons and others, we carefully urge carefully evaluation of the project to ensure that it is consistent with the priority concerns identified in the Minnesota Blue Earth Water Plan. The water plan includes priorities for water quality, drainage management, and erosion prevention, emphasis for the use of best management practices and controls to reduce excess nutrients from entering surface waters. Project-specific comments, the department does not support the use of drainage coefficients greater than .50 in, in any drainage improvement projects. The final engineer's report retained the drainage standard of .75 to .78 inches per day in the upper portions of the drainage system in an attempt to further drain historic wetland basins. Cannot utilize runoff as a drainage source. These drain basins located in the upper reach of the watershed should be used for temporary storage instead of contributing to the increased flows. We understand the logic, agronomic sense, but not in the environmental sense. Again, the cumulative effect is, is of significant concern. Appendix F shows that 1 percent, a 1 percent increase in peak flows at the proposed five, 10, and one year events. These discharge rates should be reduced to less than the existing ACSI rates and maintained because big cob is impaired by altered hydrology. Again, small changes are contributing to the cumulative effects of, on public resources. Consider designing a flow rate that is equal to or less than the ACSI condition and address ongoing water quality problems. The outlet photo should be taken looking upstream from the, the receiving channel to better show the outlet pipe to document its condition. Also, the proposed outlet will be pressured due to combining Branches 2 and 3 with a shared outlet. This will also, will this new outlet be stable? Are downstream channel impacts expected to occur? This FER should include plans to store more water on the landscape to mitigate obviously increased total annual and, and duration peak flows. In addition to storing water on the landscape, these temporary storage basins will increase infiltration, improve aquatic habitat. This project proposal to fill up a private ditch along the north end of the Branches 2 and 3. This ditch and riparian area are currently providing habitat and other public benefits. Any impacts on this uncropped area should be mitigated. Please contact Jen, Dan Geralamo, an area hydrologist, at 507-822-1559, or email Daniel Geralamo at statemn.us if you have any questions about this letter, and it's signed Todd Colander, EWR District Manager. And that's it for jurisdictional documents.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. And then the, we have the motion to accept the affidavits into the legal record.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Then at this time, we will now have Mr. Chuck Brandl with IAC discuss the results of the detailed survey report.
I'm ready.
Did you want the viewers to go first, or?
That was just the redetermination.
Oh, just the redetermination, okay. Good morning.
Morning, Chuck.
Morning, Chuck.
I have Kyle Waring with me.
Morning, Kyle.
He did most of the work on the report. So we'll just go over a summary of the final engineer's report. We've discussed a little bit about the process. We did have a landowner meeting. Some of the goals of the final engineering report are developed, feedback from landowners, which we did get some last week, and ensure the project is feasible, practical, cost-effective, and necessary, and then obviously get the viewer's determination of benefits. So through the process, CD 86, when you include JD 28, has approximately 5,200 acres. It's a fairly flat system, primarily all row crops with soils, clay soils, like Dan said, established in 1958, with, there were some repairs in 2017 and an improvement in 1998. Here's the watershed map. You look at the colors, the red is the CD 86 watershed boundary, which is approximately 4,200 acres. JD 28 is approximately 975 acres. And the area for the improvement is shown in purple and is approximately 400 acres. Here's just some site photos. There was discussion of the condition of the open ditch and condition of the outlet. We have looked at that, and we will address that in the DNR comments later. Yeah, go ahead.
As I said, I'm Kyle Waring with IAC, helped put together a lot of this report. So when we looked at the existing Branch 2 and 3 systems, we looked at the drainage capacity. As stated, NRCS standards is around a half inch per day, so that's the amount of water a system can drain down in 24 hours. When you're looking at Branch 2 and 3, you're looking at approximately half of what's reckoned for today. Branch 2 is at a .28, and Branch 3 is at a .24 at its outlet. There is some increase in drainage capacity because it does go up a significant hill when it was originally established, so you have some pretty steep pipe. So moving into our proposed design, there are some things we like to consider when looking at improvements. We like to have at least four feet of cover, make sure you can private tile into the system, and it actually has protection from modern farming practices. We try to look at best management practices, the adequacy of the outlet, and size for a half to a three-quarter inch drainage coefficient, which we'll talk about here soon. So here's a map of the proposed conditions. We are proposing to combine Branch 2 and 3 into a single tile system called Branch 2, and sizing to a 24-inch tile, and at a .78 drainage coefficient. The reason why it is higher than a half inch is because we're combining two branches into a singular branch, and also filling in a private ditch. So you're combining three outlets into a single pipe outlet for 24-inch tile.
And, and it is a standard to try to limit outlets. The less outlets you have, the less potential you have for erosion. So that is a good practice to try to eliminate as many as you can.
Yep. And also to touch on as well, since it's an old lake bed, it doesn't have traditional surface drainage as an option, so that's why tile does have to be sized a little bit bigger because the system solely relies on underground system. So here's just looking more at the tile capacities, as I said, sizing to a three-quarter inch drainage coefficient for Branch 2 and Branch 2A, which if I back up, does extend to the north property to have an adequate outlet for them as well.
Just back up one, one more comment. On the, on the layout, the reason that the system is being routed to the west is, is pretty much for cover. The old basin has had some subsidence. The tile is in very poor shape, pretty much non-functional, doesn't have enough cover, so we're moving it to the west to provide adequate cover and make this branch last for hopefully a very long time.
So moving on to project costs, we have to look at what's called several maintenance. That's basically the cost to repair the system. So we look at if you were to repair Branch 2 and 3 back to when they were originally constructed back in the 50s, that would cost around $125,000. The improvement cost to upsize to a three-quarter inch drainage coefficient and have a singular tile would cost around $161,000, so net cost of $36,000 for a total landowner cost of around $163,000. There was, for the benefits that Mr. Ruby was giving over, was $41,000, so that is above the total net cost of the system. So this is a practical and feasible option. Looking at the abandonment of the existing tile, just from landowner feedback, some of the tile has had some repair issues, but if we do encounter any existing tiles, we do hook them up into the new system if this were to pass. So moving on a little bit about modeling and state statute, we look at the adequacy of the outlet. We do this through a model that we put in ditch and tile lines, the land use coverage, soil data, and LiDAR as well. It gives us a good 2D model that we can actually look at where flooding happens on the landscape. So if I play this here, this is a video comparing the as-constructed system on the left versus the proposed on the right. Areas where there is just blue are areas that have low flooding, areas that have green and red have more water on the landscape. And this is for a 10-year storm event. So as you can see, once it plays here, the basin does get inundated with flooding, but in the proposed system, with that upsize and drainage capacity, we do drain out faster in the lower basin, and then also in the upper landscape as well, with a better outlet does draw down faster as well.
But when you look at the open ditch and, and the open ditch capacity, it does not have an effect on the open ditch downstream. The water's all contained within the open ditch. It does not have additional flooding downstream.
So touching on this here, when we look at the outlet flows, we have to look at the adequate suite of the outlet, as I touched on. At the CD 86 outlet, we have a 0% increase in flows at the outlet. When we look at the Branch 2 and 3 watershed, there is very insignificant amount of drainage increases because you're taking three outlets and merging them into that one tile outlet, so that ranges from anywhere to a half CFS to, up to one and a half to two CFS. We did take into account some temporary damages from construction. We normally take these at two-years rent. For this project, that would be around 6.8 acres.
There was a comment at the landowner meeting that based on the location of the proposed tile, I can kind of follow, there might be a, a small unfarmable piece depending on the timing of the project, so we're recommending to add that area into the temporary damages, or just moving it further west to get cover, but that leaves an area between the property line and the tile that would be tough to farm. So we're proposing to add a few more temporary damages for that based on the landowner comments. We did put together a multi-purpose drainage management plan. That is a requirement of statute to look at alternative practices. We looked at the whole watershed, and actually a few years ago, we, there were some practices that were implemented in this watershed, primarily alternative side inlets. That was part of a previous grant. But there are other practices. You can see the, the Phillips wetland is already shown, another wetland that we'll talk about a little bit later, but then there's other practices like controlled drainage. For this project, we're proposing just a drop intake in place of the open ditch, an alternative side intake. We did look at the DNR advisory letter, and you know, kind of a summary of their major points was that we exceeded the point five drainage coefficient. There was a one percent increase in a few of the events. The slopes were too flat for buried tile, and the proposed project should include plans for storing water. We did look at all of these. The increased drainage capacity is because we have an isolated basin, and we're taking overland flow and tile flow. So typically, the NRCS standard is a point seven five drainage coefficient. The proposed improvement will have a zero percent increase in peak flows at the outlet, so we feel that the outlet is adequate. And then the slopes that are being proposed as part of the project actually follow the Minnesota Drainage Guide standards, and we're above the minimum standards for slope based on the Minnesota Drainage Guide and based on all of our experience with other tile systems. There are future plans for establishing terraces to potentially retain water, and that's being investigated by landowners. Did not have enough benefits to do any additional storage on the system. So in conclusion, we feel that the project is cost-effective, practical, and feasible, and a necessity, and that it should be approved as presented and bid and constructed. Thank you.
Okay. Make a check. Both ISGs. Yeah. Okay, at this time, we will now hear from Mr. Dan Ruby as he goes over the viewer's report.
Okay, here is the final statement for branch two and three. Net benefits were forty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-three cents. There was fifty-five point five As, fifteen Bs, ninety Cs, and eighteen Ds. Benefited acres was one hundred and seventy-eight point five acres. It would be convenient to just run through the slides. Dennis Johnson has property on both the two and three and X, so if it's all right with you, I'd just like to just talk the lat X at the same time. The net benefits for lat X was one hundred and forty thousand, four eighty-five. The As was forty-nine point five As, seventy-seven point five Bs, three hundred and twelve Cs, one hundred and thirty-four and a half Ds. Total area in the lat X improvement was five hundred and seventy-three and a half acres. Here's the Dennis Johnson changes for the improvement. Viewers took into account the direction of the surface flow while the parcel owner tiled the fields directly into the ditch. So for parcel two O five, his tile maps show the area was tiled out. This is for lat X. In the southeast, northeast, it was, it had, originally it had four Cs and two Ds. Because it was tiled out, he now has six Ds. His parcel two O six is tiled out, show, tile map shows the area was tiled out. In lat X, there was southwest, northeast, there originally were two Cs. Because it was at the sub watershed line, we changed that to two Ds. He also has area in branch two and three in the northeast, northeast. It was tiled directly to the open ditch. There's the, this was the call, and the benefits were removed from that parcel. So here's where the two acres are, and this area was removed. The damages for branch two and three were not listed in the submitted version. Chuck just stated six point eight two. We will, if that's the case, we'll change it to six point eight two, but this is what we had, six point two eight, six point eight four acres, at six hundred dollars per acre damages, a total of four thousand, one hundred and four dollars. Here's the corrected version of branch two and three. The net benefits was forty-one thousand, one hundred and eighteen. There were fifty-four and a half As, fourteen Bs, eighty-eight Cs, fourteen Ds, for a total of one hundred and seventy point five acres. The dis benefit was act, this needs, should have been eliminated because that was already taken care of in the RLB. The temporary benefit was six point eight four for four thousand, one hundred and four acres of damage, and there was twenty-three point five three acres of non-benefitted.
That's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Dan, for that report. At this time, we'll open it for hearing for public comments, and those individuals wishing to make a comment on the improvement to County Ditch eighty-six, please do so at this time. Please come forward and state your name and your address for the record, and we ask that you limit your comments to more than three minutes. If anyone wishing to make comments for the improvement at County Ditch eighty-six. Again, if there's a last time for anyone wishing to make comments for the improvement to County Ditch eighty-six.
I'm just switch it over.
Okay. Last time for anyone wishing to make comments for improvement to County Ditch eighty-six. Hearing no further comments, I will close the public comment portion of the meeting and bring it back to the board, and get a motion in a second to accept the findings in order for the improvement of County Ditch eighty-six.
I would move approval.
Second.
Yep.
Second.
There's a second by Vance. Okay. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Well, Mr. Chair, just one clarification. Chuck, I think it came up at the informational meeting, but the private ditch, so two questions, is going to get filled and taken care of, not as part of the ditch system, is my understanding?
That is not considered a project cost, so that will be done privately.
And then, so secondly, back to the DNR letter about mitigating the wildlife and whatnot, or what's going on there, that is really not in our wheelhouse at this point.
It's a private ditch, and that is outside of the project.
Okay.
We're, the only portion that we're affecting is where we're crossing it.
Okay.
The rest of it, that's all done privately.
Clarification.
Yep.
Thank you. That's all. Have Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, accept the findings in order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries. Mr. Austinson, I guess at this time, would you please review the resolution to finance?
We have a resolution to financing. That this resolution to financing is, we always do this because then we can bond if we wish to. It doesn't mean we are going to bond, especially on a small project like this. The only way it would be bond for it if it was combined with other larger projects, so we just like to have the ability to do so if we wish.
Understood.
So moved. Yep, I was just going to ask, motion in a second. Okay. So moved by.
Second.
Moved by Kevin, and seconded by Kip. To finance improvement of County Ditch eighty-six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries. Okay, next, then, we have the final hearing for County Ditch eighty-six. This is the lateral hearing, and Mr. Austinson, would you please again review the jurisdictional documents?
Again, for jurisdictional documents, landowner information meeting is October seventeenth. Here we notice or mail in September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Notice was published of this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse. Notice of public hearing is also published in Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks. There will be a resolution to financing if this project's approved. And now I'll read the DNR report. This is from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources dated August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, addressed to myself, Craig Austinson. Subject, County Ditch eighty-six, Lateral X Improvement, Final Engineer's Report, Blue Earth County, Minnesota. Dear Mr. Austinson, on behalf of the Director of the Division of Ecological Water Resources and Department of Natural Resources, I offer the following comments in the Final Engineer's Report with the project referenced above, in accordance with Minnesota Statutes one oh three, eight point two five five. In general concern of all proposed ditch improvement projects is the cumulative effect of the projects upon the downstream resources and property owners in terms of the quantity and quality of the water that is received. Even small project-specific and cumulative impacts from ditch projects can result in downstream flooding, erosion, and degrading water quality. The Final Engineer's Report continues to use the muted changes in flow at the outlet of County Ditch eighty-six to support the project, but in reality, the flows will increase and contribute to unnecessary impacts downstream. Again, the cumulative effect issue and concern should be a priority. For these reasons and others, we urge the careful evaluation of the project to ensure that it is consistent with priority concerns identified in Minnesota, excuse me, the Blue Earth Water Plan. The Water Plan includes priorities of water quality, drainage management, erosion prevention, and emphasizes the use of best managed practices to control, reduce excess nutrients from entering surface waters. Project-specific comments. This FER mentions that the option two is a PER was selected for the improvement. The south route bisects wetlands forty, number forty-five. This wetland should be used for water storage instead of contributing to the increases in flow. Is wetland forty-five currently tiled? If not, Blue Earth County Wetland Conservation Act staff should be consulted to determine the regulatory status of wetland number forty-five. Flow calculations can still show a one to two percent increase in peak flow rates for the proposed fifty and hundred-year events. These discharge rates should be reduced to less than the existing AC SI rates and maintained because the Cobb River is impaired. Again, small changes are contributing to the cumulative effect of public resources. Consider using slightly decreased flow rates that is equal or less than the AC SI ratio to address ongoing water quality problems. The FER was conflicting, has conflicting information regarding the future use of the existing private twelve-inch tile that is generally flowing in a similar path between one hundred and sixty-first street and the main ditch. Page five of the FER mentioned blocking the existing private tile, and on page nine, profile says a twelve-inch tile will be hooked up to the new twenty-four inch lateral X when encountered. If the private tile is connected to the new tile, the reported flow should account for both new and existing tiles. Please explain how this private tile was modeled. The picture of the proposed outlet for lateral X is not shown in the FER. The new tile should be designed to enter the mainstream at a softened angle instead of entering the channel perpendicular to the flow. The additional detail of the outlet projection is needed. The construction plan shows nine cubic yards of class three riprap and class four geotextile. How will these materials be installed? Will this new outlet be stable? The FER states that the storage is not required for this improvement based on the projected flows of County Ditch eighty-six storage should be incorporated into the final construction plans, be mitigated past drainage improvements with the contributing of the ongoing impairment of Cobb Creek. The Drainage Authority should take advantage of any opportunities to make environmental improvements to the drainage system during this improvement process. Please contact Dan Geralamo, area hydrologist, at five oh seven, eight two two, fifteen fifty-nine, or email Daniel Geralamo at state.mn.us if you have any question for this letter, and that is signed by Todd Colander, EWR District Manager. And that's it for jurisdictional documents.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. And at this time, get a motion to accept the affidavits into the legal record?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed carries. Okay. Now at this time, we'll have Mr. Chuck Randall with ISG discuss the results of the detailed survey report. Okay. And you want to identify your other?
Yep, this is Chuck Randall with ISG.
Jen Woodmer, also with ISG.
Who did most of the report. So we won't go over the history again, but this part of County Ditch eighty-six is approximately four hundred plus acres, shown in purple. Currently, there is no public tile branch that drains this area, so there was a petition for a lateral to add a new branch to the system. The reason for that is that overland flow from the rest of the watershed was flowing through the area near the outlet. There was a township road that was washing out multiple times a year, so the goal was to account for that water. And essentially, when you look at the rest of the system, most of the areas have access to a public branch, where in this case, there's a large watershed that drains a basin that flows overland through this area and a private tile. So that was the reason for the project. Here's just some imagery of the site. You can see what happens when there is a large rain event. Rain comes over the township road and through the township road, and then floods this area, so the landowner petition to have a public branch essentially take that water through their property to the public ditch. Aye. Go ahead, Jen.
So I went on site just to see a little bit better how this wetland outlets into the existing private tile. So the picture on the left shows the tile outlet for the wetland that outlets into the Township Road ditch, which then immediately flows through a culvert across the road into an intake on the private tile that we are proposing to turn into the proposed lateral X. So here is the proposed watershed. It's about four hundred acres, a little bit over. We came up with two improvement options. So the green option one is flowing through the low area of the property. That showed some difficulties with cover. We would have had to bring in excess material and fill over it just so that it can be farmed over.
And so it has adequate cover for public tile.
Right. So we came up with another proposed option two. This goes through a side hill, so it's, doesn't need additional cover, and it's slightly shorter than the option one. So since there's no existing public tile branch, we don't have any drainage capacities to compare. It's just a private twelve-inch. So we are proposing to have a point five inch per day drainage coefficient, and that's the same for both option one and option two. Here's a plan sheet for proposed option one. Like I said, it runs through the low ground, and it requires filling over the top of the tile to maintain a five-foot depth.
So all the orange area shown on the plan would be where fill material would go?
Here's proposed option two. You can see it cuts to the south, and we will cross-connect into the existing private tile. So where that cross-connect is, will block the private tile, so all of the water will be rerouted through the proposed twenty-four inch tile.
One of the DNR comments discusses, will there be two outlets, and do you need to model the existing private tile? We're tying that into the new twenty-four, so all the flow will be going through the proposed improvement, and then the existing private tile will be cut off at this location, and then it'll also be cut off at the road. So all of the flow from the south essentially go through the new tile, and then the existing basin, if there are any potential wetlands there, has to go through the twelve-inch tile, but not a direct connect. So we're not increasing that out at the outlet.
Project costs, so since there's no existing public tile branch, there's no separable maintenance or cost to repair what was already there, so all of this is improvement cost, so it'll be assessed to the benefited landowners as the viewers determine. So option one, improvement cost is one hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. It's more. It's more expensive due to the filling and slightly longer tile. The viewers benefited the system a little over $140,000, so the net benefit for option one is $45,000 over the benefits, so not economically feasible. Option two, the cost is $129,600. Again, we have the $140,000 viewer benefit, so the net benefit is just over $10,000.
Just to kind of explain, and I know Dan will cover benefits, but when you look at the whole watershed, only the purple area is assessed for this lateral, nothing outside of that, so the rest of CD 86 is not assessed for this. And when you, and I know Dan will cover it, but you've got proximity and direct benefits. The petitioner, the first land that's crossed, I believe, is paying close to 50% or 40% to 50% of the cost of the project because they are benefited with the rest of the land. Even though they're not 40% to 50% of the 400 acres, they get the most benefit. So that was something that we went over at the landowner meeting.
So we did a hydraulic model, just like the previous project. We showed basically max 1% to 2% increase and a slight decrease in flows downstream. This is just changes in timing due to the larger tile and how it lays on the land. We don't anticipate any negative impacts to the outlet or downstream of the system.
We also did look at the wetland basin that was constructed and looked at the, I'm just going to go back to that photo, looked at its condition prior to being a wetland, the farm condition versus its condition now. Really, what probably should have happened when this was constructed is this lateral should have been put in as an outlet to continue that outlet all the way to the open ditch. So this is kind of fixing that issue during some smaller events. This actually contributes more flow during larger events. It decreases flow, so there's no real change in the amount of flow that this area is seeing. So that's why it should have probably been brought all the way to the open ditch at that time. That was all done privately. There's no ladder, nothing was done wrong because that was all done privately. It was done in the past as a private project, and there was no public tile here, so. We did look at the DNR comments. Just looking through those, we are going to, can keep the 12-inch private tile, but it's not going to have a direct connection to the open ditch, so we shouldn't have an effect on wetland 45. We did look at the Cobb River is not impaired for hydrology, but for fish bio-assessments. But there are some slight increases and decreases in the peak flows. No impacts to the outlet. Like we said, the existing private tile will be connected in. There is a detail to show how riprap at the tile outlet will be installed. This is something we do quite often. And then we also consult with MINDOT guidelines on tile outlets and riprap design. There will be adequate design for erosion protection at the outlet. We did look at water storage at the PER. There was an option for it, but due to the size of the project, it was not feasible without any outside, unless there was some outside funding. So we're recommending that option two is cost-effective, practical, and feasible. Option one is not, so we're recommending moving forward with option two. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck and Jen, for your report. Okay. And at this time, and I hear from Mr. Dan Ruby again, as he goes over the Bureau's report.
Okay. We talked about a few corrections or recommended changes. For lat X, the net benefits is $139,247. There were 49 and 1/2 As, 77 and 1/2 Bs, 306 Cs, 138.5 Ds, for a total of benefited acres was 571.50. There was temporary damages of 6.65 for a value of $3,990. And there were 125.09 acres of non-benefitteds. That's my report.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. Okay. Okay. At this time, we'll open the hearing for public comment. And those individuals wishing to make comment on the lateral to County ditch 86 may do so at this time. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. So if anybody is wishing to comment at this time on the lateral transfer, please come forward. If anybody wishes to make any public comment regarding this, please come forward at this time. If there's, I guess, hearing, no further comments, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and bring us back to the board. Do you get a motion, a second, to accept the findings in order?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval.
It's been moved by Kevin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any discussion? All those in favor, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? All right. And I guess at this time, we have a motion, a second, to accept the findings in order. So we did that. I guess, Mr. Ostenson?
Yeah. Again, we have a resolution to financing. This allows us to bond if we so wish. It doesn't mean we will, but it just gives us an option in the future group. We shall, if it works out in favor of the landowners, to do so.
Thank you, Craig. So then, I guess, at this time, may I motion again and a second?
So moved.
It's been moved a second by Kevin for the resolution of finance improvement of County ditch needed. Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Two second?
I thought you... He seconded, didn't he?
I seconded.
Yeah. He's kind of quiet today. Okay. So it's been moved a second and approved. Well, that, at this point, concludes the County ditch 86 hearings, and then I guess moving on. We have the petition for impalement and divert and reroute for the judicial ditch 15.
For judicial ditch 15.
Yep. Okay. So I just wanted, I guess, good morning and welcome again to the hearing on the petition of impartial abandonment and reroute to portions of judicial ditch 15. And we start hearings by having Drainage Staff Craig here read the jurisdictional documents.
Okay. This hearing was set, okay, excuse me. Blue Earth County judicial ditch 15 is a public drainage, public drainage system primarily located in Lincoln Township. The petition is to make alterations to JD 15, was received July 26, 2022. Requested action, petition requested the board approve the relocation of a tile allowing the landowners to restore wetlands on the property. Board should approve the petition if it finds the proposed project will be a public benefit, will not impair the utility of a drainage system, and will not deprive the affected landowners of its benefits. And hearing notice was sent on October 7th, 2022. Hearing notice was published in Mankato Free Press on October 13th, 2022. And that's it for jurisdictional documents.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. At this time, can I get a motion to accept the affidavits into the legal record?
So moved.
I have a motion, a second.
A second.
A second, again. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And now we'll hear from the engineer for the review of the petition construction. Chuck?
I do have some maps, but I'll just make it, I'll make it pretty short. We did review the petition, and we did have some back and forth with Tom Wedzel from Bowser on the design and the capacity. We shared our standard specifications for construction, so we, the proposed realignment will meet the capacity that currently is there. There is one tile change that's slightly smaller, but there's also less acres coming to it, so it should match the same drainage capacity. But we recommend that the project is built to county drainage standards, which would be essentially a dual-wall tile, either spooned in or a square bottom with aggregate material to six inches above. And then we recommend that the system be televised after it's installed, just to make sure that it is in good shape and we can accept it, so. Like I said, I do have a full report, but I, that's a summary of it.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Like I said, at this time, we will open the hearing for public comment. Those wish, individuals wishing to be heard pertaining to matters of this hearing are asked to come to the podium and state your name and address, and please keep your comments to no more than three minutes. And we have time. Anybody who wishes to come before the podium regarding this last item? Again, anyone wishing to come forward, again, please do so at this point. And hearing ended, we'll bring it back to the, our time, please, yeah, bring it back then to the board.
I would move the findings in order.
It's been moved, findings to be in order by Kevin. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. With that, motion in favor, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? All right. This concludes the judicial ditch 15 meeting. All right. Thank you.
Ryan.
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 I have a quick memo for a proposed bid warning for County ditch 56 over near Lake Crystal. Bids were solicited by multiple contractors for our proposed repair work, which involves sediment removal to portions of County ditch 56, open ditch primarily located near the Crystal Lake inlet or 56 outlet. The area of sediment removal impacts both County ditch 56 as well as Crystal Lake. On October 11th of 2022, bid submissions were due for the repair work. Seven contractors were solicited and two submitted bids for the proposed work. Riggert Excavating was one of them, submitted some bid of $122,000, and Holtmeyer Construction of Mankato submitted a bid of $63,930 with an engineer's estimate of $89,064. This repair is a collaborative effort between Crystal, City of Lake Crystal, Blue Earth County, Blue Earth County Drainage Area Lake Associations. City of Lake Crystal recently has recommended approval of Holtmeyer Construction to perform the repair and sediment work as outlined in the bid documents and specifications. Today, I am asking the Drainage Authority to award Holtmeyer Construction in the amount of $63,930 for the proposed sediment cleanup.
So moved.
It's been moved by Kevin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Any word? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
We have a short break.
Yep. That's all.
Thank you, Ryan. Thanks much.
Appreciate it.
With that, we'll have a short break here. Thank you for all those coming. Till 10:30?
Yeah.
Till 10:30.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Thanks, Chuck.
Thanks, Dan.
Everybody else does.[1455.14]
Thanks, Chuck.
Thanks, guys.
Everybody else does.
Okay. There we go. We'll resume our meeting here with, next up is our planning and zoning regarding George and Garrett regarding several.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Garrett Goffin with Property Environmental Resources. PC twenty-three dash twenty-two is a request from Sam Bornekey for interim use permit for a project that involves cutting and filling more than fifty cubic yards of material within the shoreline of Madison Lake. The project proposal involves filling, adding fill to the right-of-way of County State Aid Highway forty-eight, filling in an existing pond on private property and the expansion of another pond on private property. The property is owned agricultural and conservation and is in the shoreline of Madison Lake. It includes lots four and five of Block One of Bornekey Lakeview subdivision, which is in the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section One, where they township. Staff presented their report. There was no public comment. Members of the planning commission indicated the report was thorough and well thought out. They had no further questions or concerns. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted to forward a recommendation for approval of the request to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with the conditions recommended by staff. And the board action is the passage of the resolution based on findings and conditions recommended by the planning commission. Thank you.
You think Garrett? Public hearing. Okay. All right. Do we do each one?
Yeah, we'll do them all separate.
What's that?
We'll do them all separate.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, then we have motion.
Public hearing first, Mark.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. Okay, we have, okay, we had the point with public comment here. Anybody wishing to speak regarding this item, please come forward. If anybody wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Again, we'll bring it back to the board.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Vance.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos, carries. Okay. The next one?
PC twenty-four dash twenty-two is a request from Corvus Properties LLC for an interim use permit to allow camper sales and service business. Automobiles, motorcycles, and ATVs will occasionally be offered for sale. The property is owned highway business and is in the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section twenty-eight, Johnson Township. Staff presented the report. An individual addressed the planning commission expressing his concern with potential impacts of lighting on neighboring properties. Members of the planning commission added some, indicated some concern with the potential impact of lighting on neighboring properties. It was also indicated that previous stormwater concerns appeared to have been properly addressed. They had no further questions or concerns. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with the conditions recommended by staff. And with the additional condition number thirteen, that the project proposer shall work with the staff to eliminate light intrusion onto neighboring properties. The board action is the passage of the resolution based on the findings and conditions recommended by the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Any questions? Okay. We have the action here on this.
Public hearing.
I said that, but it didn't have time. Yeah, we had a public hearing. I mean, is there anybody wishing to comment regarding PC dash twenty-four dash twenty-two? If you're wishing to comment, please come forward. Again, if anybody wishes to comment on twenty-four dash twenty-two, please come forward.
We got somebody.
Okay, there we go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just would like to let you know that there's a reason that the owner.
Name and address, please. Name and address, please.
Name and address, please.
Steve Michael, nine zero four Lakeview Court, Lake Crystal. I apologize for being unable to hear. I have a bad middle ear infection. It really has improved my marriage. It's difficult today.
Okay.
I did want to let you know why the owner's not here. Her husband decided to get COVID. And she's been exposed, so she just wanted to let you know. She very much wanted to be here and be a part of this. She did designate me the project manager for this and future development. I am her father. The, the hope is, I guess, that this is approved and that we can move forward. It's been kind of a long process. But as difficult as part of it was cleaning up this property and getting to this stage, we're happy we're there. Some of the difficulty in the permitting process. I do want to thank county staff. I think without the willingness on their part to allow us to, to give to them several draft copies of responses to some of these concerns, we'd have been at this a much longer time. So that's basically all I have to say. People with me, Mary Nelson is my able assistant. She keeps me kind of directed in the right way. Craig Britton is our engineer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to it. Hope things are better for you. Anybody else wishing to come forward to just state your name and address, please?
Yep. Good morning, commissioners. Craig Britton with Seth, three seven seven seven, fortieth Avenue, Northwest Rochester. And like Steve said, I'm the civil engineer on the project and we did review the thirteen conditions outlined in the resolution and are in agreement with them and just here to answer any questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Craig. Again, we have anybody else wishing to speak on this? Twenty-four, twenty dash twenty-two? Okay. Hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I'll remove approval of the resolution based on the findings and conditions recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
I'm moved in second. Any discussion? And okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pos, carries. Okay. We have what, PC twenty-five dash twenty-two?
Yes, PC twenty-five, twenty-two is a request from Valley News Cato Holding Company for preliminary and final plat of Gurnee subdivision number four. It is a replant of all lot eight of Gurnee subdivision number three to a lot. Approval of the request will allow construction of a single-family dwelling. The property is owned rural residence and is in the shoreline of Lake George. The location is in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section twenty, James Town Township. Staff presented the report. There was no public comment. Members of the planning commission indicated they had no concerns provided proper erosion control is maintained. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted to forward a recommendation of for approval of the preliminary and final plat of Gurnee subdivision number four to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with the conditions recommended by staff. The board action is the passage of the resolution based on the findings and conditions recommended by the planning commission. Thank you.
Good job, George. Is there anybody wishing to speak regarding twenty-five dash twenty-two? Anybody wishing to speak regarding the issue? Again, it's third time anybody wishing to speak on PC twenty-five dash twenty-two? Hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move the resolution based on the findings and conditions recommended by the planning commission.
I was second. They're second by Vance. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pos, carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, then we have.
Well, maybe we don't have.
We don't have.
Well, Mr. Chair, would you like to do a couple of administrative items?
Yes, we could do that.
Oh, there he is.
There he comes.
He's coming.
There's a grand entrance, okay.
He's waiting so long, he's clear. It was worse before.
We've had a busy day today.
Yeah, it sure looked like.
Hi, Phil.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Chair, I have a couple of action items for the board today and then three discussion items as well.
Okay.
Starting with the action items first, in financial assistance, we have a contract with MRCI for our SNAP employment and training. And so people that receive supplemental nutrition assistance are required to also seek employment. And so this is a mandated service. It's a renewal contract. It's a smaller contract to go against some of the bigger amounts of money that we do get to do this work, but it did decrease by about twelve hundred dollars and is currently at fifty-six hundred dollars. Statewide, there was a decrease of about a hundred thousand dollars, so that reduction is our portion of that. And they have not provided information on what caused that reduction, so it was a little bit of a surprise for us, even though it's not a huge amount of money. Additional funds are released, often in the spring, not always. So we're hopeful that maybe we can augment some of this come spring. The term is the federal fiscal year, October first of twenty-two through September thirtieth of twenty-three. And one additional action item, substance use disorder, Woodland Centers. The purpose is to fill our statutory mandate to provide detox services when individuals are detained by law enforcement within our county. We have kind of a order of backup. Brown County Valuation is our primary treatment facility, followed by Zumbro Valley, and then third is this contract with Woodland Centers. And there are times, as you can imagine, like during homecoming at MSU, where we do get full and need, we've agreed with law enforcement that we would have this three levels of backup and it seems to serve us fairly well. The contract this round also includes a short-term adult, which we have our own crisis center, but adolescent crisis stabilization service, which has not been available to us prior. They usually limited that to people within their region. And so we asked to be included in that. Very pleased that they're letting us access that service, which we need desperately on occasion. The per diem for detox was actually reduced from five hundred and ninety-five dollars a day to four hundred and seventy-five, but there is also a three thousand dollar annual administrative fee, which we pay either way. So they've kind of restructured their payment and reduced the per diem. But we will pay three thousand dollars as an administrative fee annually. And then the youth crisis stabilization per diem is six hundred and sixty dollars for twenty-twenty-three. The term, January first of twenty-three through December thirty-first of twenty-three. And those are my action items, Mr. Chair.
Any questions on that? I was, so with that three thousand annual administrative service fee, is that, I don't know, is it supposed to balance out?
I think the detox is because, Commissioner, that there has been a reduction. People are willing to provide that service. It's kind of a thankless mission to be in, to be really candid. And I used to run a detox up north before I came to Blue Earth County many years ago. And there's just less facilities now. They've been reduced significantly over time. And so they have us, you know, in that place where they need to float their boat. And they're saying you will pay three thousand dollars to be part of this, this deal, this co-op. And then you'll pay as we go as well. And I actually think it's a pretty fair deal and that they let us in and let us access the children's crisis stuff was really a positive. But yeah, the supply and demand in detox is a really tough one. And so Vance knows the law enforcement piece. When you do have somebody that needs detox, you need to find a bed. And so there's less of those around, that's for sure.
Continuing problem.
And the hundred dollars or a hundred and twenty-dollar difference gets made up very fast in Blue Earth County.
Correct.
We are the largest supporter of detox. We are the largest supporter of detox of the Brown County evaluation centers. So the, I would say that's probably a huge savings for Blue Earth County.
Right.
You know, it seems like that $3,000 off the top is a lot. Another thing, it makes us a member.
Right.
And a non-member, which there's a lot of counties that try to send their stuff that are not members, they may not be able to get in, but we know we're going to get in.
Absolutely. Brown County's been a great partner to us. This contract with Woodland Centers is similar in the sense where I think we have to have a backup plan, but we're treated very well by our partners, as Commissioner knows, being on the board. So we're very appreciative of that primary relationship. Those beds do fill up and there's a spillover. And so that's when we use Zumbro or this facility at Woodland Centers as well.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Any other questions?
I would move to-
Vance moves or seconded onto the two items?
I'll second.
And Julianne seconds? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who's curious. Thanks on that. Thank you on that, Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And commissioners, I do have some informational discussion items. Two of them are pretty straightforward and one of them has a little more of a discussion attached to it to make sure that we're in lockstep with the board regarding some of our supportive housing situation, and I'll update the board on that. I'm starting with the disability slide on the graphs. You'll see the box that has the data in it shows increase in almost every area. Looks like our non-wavered services went down a little bit in '21. And it's always interesting to me, just the COVID-related piece that doesn't seem to show up here, so that some of these services and needs remained very stable even through the tumultuous nature of COVID. The graph to the right shows the caseload, overall caseload, which has climbed year over year. There's a definition of the different types of case management that we do in the waivered world and what non-wavered services are. Most consumers have a choice. You'll see some very specific, like brain injury or CAC, where there's some waivers that are specific to certain circumstances. And then on the bottom, it's just a graph to show year over year of the different types of waivers as well. The notes that I included are, I think, helpful in that we have 13 case managers. That's not indicated in the graph. The average caseload size, 68, which is high. And I know we have pending requests for staff, which would help greatly if some of those can come through. To give you a ballpark, I'd say 55 to 60 for us would be manageable, so we're over that. But people, they're kind of troopers, as far as I'm concerned. And when you see a person in need, our staff are not shy about just jumping in and trying to help. The 887 people receiving service was indicated in the graph. The purpose of the waivers are really for people to stay in their own homes, decrease our use of hospitalization, high-end and expensive care, and deinstitutionalize the care that we provide. I said, it always helped me, I say this every time I come to the board, I think that waivered services, it's like, what are we waiving? And what we're waiving is the previous historical definition of really nursing homes. So we used to send folks with disabilities to nursing homes or facilities, as well as our geriatric population that are in need of cares. And as you all know, we have lots of options that we've added to that menu. So the waivers help pay for people to either stay in their home or do kind of à la carte menu of services, which are very cost-effective and I think very respectful as well, which is the next bullet, that people can have a better sense of directing their own care. Sometimes their choices can be somewhat limited, but there's more than there used to be. And the second to last bullet is just the social service interface, so that all the other programs that we run, when you have case management, the people are aware and can help navigate to the other services that somebody might need. So that's really the mission underlying. Maybe just take a quick pause, Mr. Chair, on that, if anybody has a question on the disability area.
Anybody have a question regarding disability?
Hearing none, yes. So the next two pieces in your board packet, obviously, we're not going to go over the lengthy narratives, but the cover sheet, Andrew Peach, who is our supervisor for housing, put together this one and a half pager for the board, just to outline kind of where we're at. And I am going to walk through that just real briefly over the top. And it really is about provider standards that we're trying to bring to the table. Back in September of '21, we came to the board for a work session and talked about, and some of you have heard probably the term GRH, group residential housing. That's what we used to call it for decades. And so I think it's going to be a while before that terminology or language comes out of our system, but now it's called housing support. So it has this more generic title, no longer GRH, housing supports. And that change started in 2016. And so it's been a few years, but it's kind of had a slow ramp up. And I think that's good. That's what we're going to share today. And really, the difference between GRH, where it was about the facility that would be able to bill this group residential housing, they've opened up that to say, now it's more of a rental assistance program. And clients can be in their own apartments, and it's a broader definition, too, so it's not just the homeless population that can qualify for this service or this funding, I should say. Metros jumped in pretty quickly with their demographic of how many people they serve. And now some of us mid-sized counties are starting to explore the pros and cons. What we brought to the board is, could we pilot this with just one provider who had four beds? And that's been going on. So that's what we asked back in September, and you were comfortable with that. So we have proceeded. It's gone just fine, really well. Now we have a couple more providers who are interested in providing this service. So that's why we're kind of ramping up what I would call a pilot move toward the future. A uniqueness of this is that there's no regulation from DHS or MDH on this service. So it's kind of a wide-open, unregulated piece. And that's unique to us. And as you all know, then that really means it kind of slides downhill on the local folks to try to figure out, what are we going to do? There's not a lot of guidance. And so that's why we're still continuing on our pathway, if the board's comfortable with just going slow and proceeding slowly. What we're adding today is provider guidelines. It really is an outline of best practices. There's really no necessarily teeth in it, but we think that we can't just leave it ill-defined. And so we did compare some notes with St. Louis County Hennepin and also relied on some of our history working in the supportive housing environment. So that's where the guidelines came from. It really is a starting place, and it is meant to be proactive. That's really what I'm trying to explain to the board, that we're kind of taking an incremental path to expanding. And I would like the board to know if the board's supportive of us expanding, but I would say probably two more providers at this point, and adding these guidelines, sharing them with the existing provider, sharing them with the prospective providers, so we have some sense of how we do this work. Like I say, I don't want to take the board's time to walk through each and every element here, but if you just look at the sections in the guidelines itself, it talks about the choice and structure, which really means that they want to treat this more like the person has permanent housing, that they have a choice in where they're housed. The section two is about how things would happen if, that you can't really kick somebody out for using a more informal way to explain what they're talking about, section two. Section three is about the service philosophy, housing first, that if we have stable housing, we're more likely to be successful in improving overall functioning. Section five outlines all the service array, both the first section is about how you obtain housing and how these providers can help people obtain housing. It lists out the eight categories that they can help with. And then the next section, very similar, but is about how they coordinate services, which I talked about earlier, and some of the care coordination pieces. Section five gets in the weeds, and that's what the language that we use to talk with these providers to make sure we're on the same page. So that gets to be more of the technical, important, structural pieces. And there's a last section, well, I guess, second to last section G, about the training that their staff need to have, so it's not a free-for-all, if you will. And then finally, policies and procedures, part of our expectation about how we discharge, how grievances could be handled. So I know this isn't an action item on purpose in that we wanted to see if the board is still comfortable with us proceeding in this way. It's kind of a soft opening, a pilot, if you will. And so far, things are going well, and we would expect to take that kind of slow and steady course, if you are all okay with that.
Okay. Makes sense to me. Is that like Andrew then is involved?
Andrew's it. You bet. He's our guy, and he's doing a great job helping to lead that.
If he is.
Yes, you bet. And he wrote up that cover sheet for you all, too, so he's been very active and involved. I appreciate his work. The last one, Mr. Chair, is just an update on SHIP. I think the board is fairly aware of the SHIP partnership between us, the state, and then lots of community providers. The first slide, you'll see kind of those four target areas of what they call Minnesota Eats, Minnesota Moves, Minnesota Wellbeing, and Tobacco Free. But if I could have the board look at that second slide that provides a little more of a description, you'll see those four areas represented here. The eating part focuses both on healthy eating, so they talk about food as medicine to support a healthier life, that we're eating well and taking care of our bodies in that way. The breastfeeding, importance of breastfeeding early on for the health of our little ones, and really advocating for breastfeeding whenever possible as a healthy choice. Under mobility, talking about exercise and movement. So an example of this is in a community setting, if somebody wanted to either have better outside walkways or maybe exercise equipment or whatever it would be, we've helped in some practical ways in getting those things set up, so the physical health comes into the workplace, for example. And then tobacco-free schools, which I think everybody's aware of, but just this is kind of a hub of that activity, reducing smoking and advocating for a healthier lifestyle. And then the last one Kelly put in here is COPEWELL Assessment, and I talked to Bob about this. It was a pretty involved assessment that MDH sent out and really is asking us to look at the future and, you know, help to learn from what we've been through. It came at a time where we're still kind of in recovery mode, so that was hard, a little bit of a burden, and I know Kelly put in some extra hours to try to get this done. But we have it done and submitted, and I do think it's a foundational piece. I think Bob and I both believe it's a foundational piece to look at some of the legislative actions that's going to come in the future. So that's the purpose of the survey. And so we did our best to try to respond accurately about. It's kind of, to summarize that, a deal version of if we could have as much as we need to be fully flushed for public health, what would it be? And I know Kelly had a big number of FDEs that we would need. So obviously, it's more pillar to post, looking at the extreme and trying to walk it back to what's the next steps as we build a good response. So that's it. A lot of words packed in, Mr. Chair, but that's what I have for the board today.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Phil. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I don't have any comments or questions at this point.
Yep. Very good.
Thank you all. Good to see you. Have a good day.
Have the rest of the day. You bet. All right. I guess Bob, yeah, we have administrator?
Mr. Chair and commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for October 11th.
Approval?
Move to approve.
Vance moves to approve or second?
Second.
Second? Julianne? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who's curious. Okay, I guess we have the bills.
Yes, next are the two, bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Kit moves the bills. By Vance. Any discussion? All those in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
Those who's curious. Okay. We just have an information item?
Yes, Mr. Chair and commissioners, I have a number eight in your packet is the Human Resources Department agenda. We do have just informational items for the board today. We have received resignation of a child enforcement specialist, and so have initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also received resignation of the sheriff at the end of the year. Another resignation in our jail, a correctional officer has resigned, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Then we also had a resignation of a part-time correctional officer and have initiated recruitment to refill that position. We had a part-time library clerk that resigned, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Then we filled a number of positions, including a maintenance technician in our public works facility, a clerical specialist in community corrections, and a facilities maintenance technician in our facilities management area, a property and environmental resources specialist in property and environmental resources, and then a promotion from sergeant to assistant jail administrator. We filled that assistant jail administrator position. Then we had a lateral transfer of a deputy sheriff to the chief bailiff to refill that position. And then a change in employment status from a temporary deputy sheriff to a permanent deputy sheriff position. So we've initiated recruitment to backfill that temporary deputy, which is funded by a grant. So I'd be happy to answer. Any questions the board might have on any of those items?
Anybody have any questions? Bob, the human resources here? Okay. Okay, then.
Busy time.
Yeah.
Again.
Continues to be.
Not often to see someone retire a sheriff, you know. It's been a number of years here. All right, well, in this case, then, I guess we're down to, thank you, Bob, or down to committee reports? Let's just, let's start Kevin.
Okay, since our October 11th board meeting, I had an AMC Drainage Work Group meeting on the 13th and an AMC implements of husbandry or farm equipment work group on the 19th. Also, on the 19th, I participated in the True Transit Advisory Committee. We were all at the GMG events on the 20th. Yesterday, we had our monthly NACO ag and rural policy committee call, and this morning was the JD10 hearing prior to the board meeting. That concludes my report.
And Kevin?
All right. We're right on the line.
All right. As Kevin stated, we had our last board meeting on October 11th. On October 12th, I had a TDS Personnel Committee meeting. On the 18th, I drove up to the cities and accepted a sustainability award for Blue Earth County at the Minnesota Solar Energy Industries Association conference. On October 20th, we had a TDS board meeting. I had a NACO Rural Action Caucus meeting and a library board meeting, along with our board forum that was handled that night. At the library board meeting, we discussed concerns that were given about the library, and we'd like folks to understand that with the renovations and upgrades to the library, there were no materials or books that are leaving the library. I mean, we never got rid of books because of the renovation. What is occurring is that the shelving will all be ADA compliant, and by bringing books into areas that everyone can reach, and it'll offer much better lighting, and it'll be much brighter inside that library. Of the two patios that were built, the adult patio, which is along Riverfront Drive, was built by using a federal CARES Act grant, and the children's patio is built using a donation from the Mary Ann Waldron estate and is named after her. When it comes to transparency, the Blue Earth County Library Board meets bi-monthly and is open to the public, and participation is always welcome. That's the end of my report.
I appreciate that, especially when you talked about the library and to the-
You bet. We're open for anybody to come to our board meetings and express their viewpoints, and anybody at any time can always contact me, since I'm on the library board, or contact Kelly from the library and let them know what their feelings are.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Vance. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So after our last board meeting, Mark and I were up at the MICA meeting in person after about two years and had a good report from all of the lobbyists that worked for MICA. Went over our property taxes and the levies that everybody else sent in the metro area. And we were very competitive, so I thought we did a good job there. and we were very competitive, so I thought we did a good job there. Then I had an SECB Finance Committee meeting. I'm not a voting member of that, but I just sit in and try to get some correlation between that and my legislative meeting. And then I spent a lot of time with the County Ditch 86 Improvement Informational Hearing. We had a good turnout, and you all seen what happened with that today. There was several other people there that couldn't come today, but they got their questions answered at the informational meeting, which is a much easier format than trying to deal with that here today, so. And then that afternoon, I had my MVAC executive meeting, just a lot of child development stuff. They bought a new truck for Judd's office. And then I was over in St. Clair trying to take care of a property tax problem they have over there, right between the, the bar and the insurance station, or the insurance office. The city owns like 15 feet, 15-foot strip, but the buildings are only five feet apart. So we were over there, Mark and I. Mark Manderfield was nice enough to come over on a short notice and tell them what their options were and how to resolve that, so we can get that off the tax roll and into some paying, citizens paying the taxes on it, instead of the city paying tax on it. And a couple WebEx meetings, the public informational meeting the other night with the county commissioners, and that brings me to the end, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Kip. Julianne?
Yeah, since your last meeting on October 12th, I attended the Region 9 Development Commission's commission meeting, and it was very focused on what's happening in the next couple of years and what the challenges are, which are commonly shared across counties and cities. So it was a very interesting commission meeting to sit on as they prepare for the next year and what their goals and priorities are going to be. That is the end of my report.
End of your report. Okay. Thank you. All right, as Kip said, yeah, we had our MICA meeting on the 12th, and that was, yeah, there was quite a few there, and we had to take that whole big room. And of course, it was at the hotel near the cap. I forgot the name of it now. It changed, but it's, they refurbished it. We have been there since then.
The old Kelly?
Yeah. The old Kelly, yeah. I forget what it's... Then on Monday, the 17th of October, did have interviewing with our directors. We're almost done that, finished with the Partners for Housing, picking a director, and, and I also had an 18th property meeting for partners and for housing, and then another one for a director on the 19th. And then we did have our candidate program, whatever, on the October 20th. And then actually, this morning, had the Airports Commission, and they were raving about County Road 12. And that was good to hear, because I don't always get positive comments like that.
That's good.
Anyway, so that was good. That concludes my report. Anything else for the good of the order?
I would move to adjourn.
To return?
Second.
Second.
Moved in second by Kip, moved by Vance. Okay, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's carries? Resessed. Okay.